Six oh five, we're gonna start policy. So Maria brought thirty-two sixty-five. Because we do need to be specific to the intentional which is.
So when I was at with the committee, Shannon Law Martens said that when we were talking about the passing periods, she had several staff who talked to her and said that their kids will get texting during class time from our parents or the leaders. And so on their way to their desk, they check really quickly to see what it was and was wrong. And so she listed a couple of specific. One was a kid off after work, checking to make sure that two of them's. Have a close. And we were talking to her and there's another mom that shouts, I mean, you could. Do as well, right, from school. So those things, so she just said it could be challenging to make sure that we're not.
Well, I hear that, but the reality is they can do that all at once. And if it's something that isn't occurring, I mean, if it's pick your kid up, pick your brother up after school or when they're out of school, they can look at their phone and see the message. I think that if we, I mean, if we continue to have these battles because we get busy. And because people are like, yeah, but we can just do it here and not over here, but then it's a ripple effect. So the board was pretty clear.
I know, I guess she does that to me, her mind, you know, that was part of the conversation.
Well, I wasn't here when this came back, I was sick. And I thought that it had been, we definitely, but it hadn't, it's the same either stuff. What I'm curious about though. So I think that's a valid statement to. The policy. So we're saying at no time will cellular phone call, cellular children's or personal electronic devices. Allowed in the classroom. Electronic devices shall not disrupt the educational process, including but not limited to posing threat to integrity or violating confidentiality or privacy that's in the individual. This is to ensure electronic devices shall not disrupt the educational process, including but not limited to posing threat to integrity or violating confidentiality. I think that's better, I think that's better. Required policy into seventy. Students that have this internet through built-in district connection organized. District department, hardware. I don't know this. What we're saying is no personal electronic devices in school buildings. Just before school, during school, or during lunch or after school. But then here, we're telling them that your.
Because above that paragraph you just were reading, the bold red letters that keep going, right there, personal electronic devices, right there, except for laptops, using devices.
Okay, so. To use. Student will be required to follow this policy as soon as they have access to the internet. So that brings it into an understanding. Provide software type systems for student electronic devices. Students found to use any electronic device to send or receive resources just. That would contribute to or constitute cheating shall be subject to. Should policy not be turned until their confidence has been held. Students are responsible for safeguarding electronic devices they bring to school. Students shall comply with any additional rules developed by the school concerning the appropriate use of telecommunication. Telecommunication is not, we've not used that word at all. But schools for the appropriate use of. Sorry, so students shall apply with any additional rules to alcohol, smoking, or any use of any electronic. Schools that's supposed to do that, posting up that policy. Students who violate this policy are subject to disqualification due to using or leveraging a device off to school. Off to school, however, students administer and will compensate the device. And parent or donor cannot comply with it. Otherwise, will be interrelated procedures accompanying this policy. And so please, will students obey the regulation?
Okay, I was just gonna ask if we have any statement that we're not responsible. As to their personal, I suppose, but yeah.
Okay, so I think that that makes it clear that you can't bring anything to school and use it. However, there is an exception for personal laptops. If you use an laptop, you have to follow this.
Sound.
Please tell me that. Volunteer assistance. So there's one. The district recognizes valuable contribution to the child's program, the parents, other citizens, their volunteers. And working with volunteers, district staff shall freely explain the volunteer's responsibility in school, on the playground, and on field trips. On field trips, both students and volunteers are to report to the rules of student behavior and how they are to be, how they handle. They should be a volunteer. Volunteers are people who assist in school or district programs that are encouraged to use their time and to support these programs. Volunteers shall be individuals who have entered into the trust or provide opposition in the district to be sworn from. That is, only under, under appropriate state statutes. It's not governed by the district in the same or similar capacity from which you are she's volunteering. Volunteers are unsupervised, unsupervised access to children are subject to the district's policy mandate and background checks. The superintendent shall be responsible for helping and providing procedures for you to work with volunteers. This procedure will facilitate active communication with persons volunteering. Learning sessions are subject to rejection of volunteer hours exclusively with the first volunteer. Doing out of volunteer four years? And. Final decision to reject an hour and a half exclusively, I don't think you should ask. Maybe that's why it's.
Is there a reject somebody?
Yeah. We're gonna go through these. Yeah. This seems so redundant, so. Transition to multiple programs, parents, citizens, volunteers, assistants. The other policies have. How many volunteers do we need to be background checked on, where, where in my. You're right, we did. This is so. Definitely should have a volunteer. Volunteers are people who assist in school and district programs that are encouraged to use and try to help them to support these programs. Well, that's what they're doing. Volunteers are people who assist in school or district programs. It's just. The volunteers shall be. Volunteer assistance, the district recognizes valuable contribution. Take this out and just start the work with volunteers. Districts to have, shall freely explain the volunteers' responsibility to school, on the background check, on the field trips. Field trips, those students or volunteers are to report to the rules of student behavior. How they are to be able to handle. To those rules. Volunteers are, with unsupervised access to children are subject to district's policy and background checks. So we could either bring all of this above the definition. This is just a weird policy, it's really. So volunteers are people who assist in school or district programs and are individuals who. These three caveats, volunteer, assistants. And volunteers, district staff shall.
Isn't, wouldn't that be more, I just wrote myself in the middle, I think, protocol that is this policy.
Well, we do have.
Do we have one?
We have a this.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if some of what's in that bottom part doesn't fit into.
These are the procedures. Oh my. Alright, so.
Is that, that too is a procedure that they want to.
That they're gonna be, that this is gonna be explained to them, this.
Oh yeah, and that's obviously gonna be the procedure, they have to have background check.
The procedure is extremely. Working.
It's very specific, qualifications, requirements, additional requirement, background check, location, placement of volunteers, supervision, relationship between schools and volunteers, orientation and training. So if we have, actually have all of our procedures, then that next paragraph, what says the superintendent is responsible for creating the procedure.
Yeah, but we, we list that in a lot of policies.
I know, I've been making notes and trying to get those done. I'm just saying that we actually have the procedure, right? I mean, if that's what it says in that draft, four six hundred P is the procedure, so I'm just wondering if.
We need to list that down here, I don't remember. Okay, well, because.
You can come back for some.
Yeah.
Just if that's not.
It's a good way to move our way through this. The district, of course, encourages. Okay, volunteers working cooperation schools. The district supports encouraging volunteers, principals, volunteers working with students to help in the name of children and school staff. Final decision to subject each of the volunteer hours exclusively within. All procedural guidelines. Procedures are the. Okay, are set with regard to volunteers. Qualifications and requirements. Qualifications and requirements of a volunteer include being a community member, possessing an aptitude, interest for working with students and teachers. Okay.
Are we defining it's.
Yeah. Okay, being dependable and. Oh yeah, we don't have any statute there. So being dependable and of appropriate character to work with students and teachers. Who determines that? Completing a criminal history check, history records check, although the future is completed, criminal history records check. Supplied by the district prior to service and will be subject to a background check. Any volunteer applicant who does not disclose his or current background will not be eligible for service.
So can we talk about that for a second? The way I read that with that, where it says supplied by the district. Criminal history, that first check is fingerprinting, costs twenty seven dollars.
Okay.
So if we're going to require everybody to get fingerprinted, opposed to that. Where it says by, by the district. I think we just need to, we need to say that differently, because I don't want us to go to a working, that's a policy.
Okay. So. One, two, three, four, E. Love it. Okay. This first one, being a community member of group standing and possessing an aptitude for working. Qualifications and requirements of a volunteer employee, being a community member.
When we say community member, does that mean I really don't really close to the district? Because I have a lot of grandparents who were given post-ado.
Um, well, I mean, I don't know, what is community? And don't call them patron.
Not anymore. Gotta be proud of me. Perfect. That we can, that we can determine.
Being dependable and of appropriate character to work with students and teachers. I don't know.
I mean, dependability is important for some parts of volunteering. But there are others where it's truly just a one tech thing, I can take this, the off.
Too many people not. Qualifications and requirements are that you're an individual that wants to work with students and teachers.
Do we even need that for a sentence? Should we just make this requirement and then start with number three? Which is no, if you're not interested in working with students and children, not actually.
So. And then we.
And then we say it again.
Okay. Okay, so.
There is typically an application, so three could be what they would completely be, application, it's a pretty short application.
A volunteer.
And I don't know if we want to put any of it, which can be done either at the district office or local office.
So maybe to complete the application, you need to complete. And then to complete, the fingerprinting process may need to complete a criminal background check. So, complete volunteer application, complete the fingerprinting process through the district office or through local law enforcement agency, and complete a criminal background check. Do we need to let them know? You don't disclose anything until it pops up. Um, reading the district's policy procedures regarding, this is the paper.
This is, this is the policy.
Yeah. Okay, so we.
Just requested a copy of volunteer applications.
Okay, well, and is it a, I guess it's another question, is it a universal form or is it?
It perhaps for buildings, I asked all six of the elementary principals to send it to me, I don't think our, our secondary is, I'd double check.
Okay.
And then, um, I can bring that.
Or. Should be one or four in building.
Yes, that's why I just, that's why I just.
Okay. Section three, E, of the federal standards, provides that individuals in the volunteer service, including units of state and local governments, among the critical employees under the statute give several interior or that.
We already defined, we defined in the policy what a, what a volunteer is. Basically, we said all of those three points.
Right. You could copy that.
Into the policy, so we actually have to.
By legal verbiage. Any volunteer who also has information on these or applicants will not be eligible for service, or these additional volunteers or the students in areas designated to school staff. Okay, well. Do you hear what I'm trying to say?
I think it's about four to be considered a volunteer.
Four. All volunteer assistants must, they're not assistants yet.
Oh, um, potential?
To me, this is like step one.
This is how you become a volunteer, and then this is what you do once you're a volunteer.
These additional requirements regarding.
Is, can, that statement, anyone who falls price, and I know the other one was, doesn't, doesn't talk about it, but in all cases. Who, can you say any applicant who falls price information or does not disclose?
Volunteer will work with students and students in the eighty five school staff. Volunteers will treat all students equally regardless of gender, gender identity.
Volunteers will treat students with claims.
Or just treats students equally.
Yeah.
With the exception of those that can't be because they're, um, by the law, or ID, or have some special need. And you can't, I mean. Let's reiterate, um, the only religious doctrines are beliefs. Um, you would be amazed, serious that.
Um, maybe we just. It's more about your, your personal.
Or the crime from, just you're not gonna do it. Disciplinary issues should be referred to as students' teacher. So. Volunteers may not be in possession of. It's not going to lose trust on the end.
Remember to go out of tobacco, use, use tobacco products.
They not being. I had it hard. Major expectations.
I, that should be a shout also.
The volunteers are willing to agree to the requirements of the district's policy procedures regarding volunteers that are formal or being applicant, that he or she may not perform volunteer services in the district. So, what are the. I think that would be more appropriate. I don't know if it's hard, but it is. That's what we're saying.
Or you could say while, um, while I can pass you as a volunteer, uh, you will, or something, I don't know how you started because you got there on the.
I don't think this is necessary. Does there is the. Which is. There's day clinical records check on the volunteers who have contacted students that are scheduled to handle human visits or who have supervisory, which will be subject to. At a school site or on a school's responsive terms, no volunteer shall be allowed to supervise students or determine, or taint to have the authority to supervise students unless the volunteer has. Doesn't mean to supervise students by the principle, doesn't mean, and volunteer has, I don't know.
One. There was a lot of supervising.
Yes. So the district shall conduct. He stated the law was check, volunteers who have contacted students on their.
So the only thing that isn't going to be required in this background check would be the parents coming in to help with that for Christmas party. If they're coming in every week, or they're going on field trip. That would require.
Volunteer shall be allowed to supervise students. A volunteer has to look up, require background check. See. Who will be responsible? To be. If the background check reveals that these conditions, as identified in the list below, or other concerns regarding past behavior, candidate, not, well, not being. Convicted against persons. It's via crimes against persons or crime against the person.
Doesn't that encompass everything down below? Or at least the next two? And I guess you. Because sexual assault.
Well, because.
I guess it's.
Convicted, yeah, because it could be pending. Yes, it's. People do crimes against persons. Uh, we have sexually assaulted or exploited in minor, you have physically abused. Don't you have sexually assaulted or exploited in minor, or to have. Uh, you have been sexually assaulted. You might. I don't know. Found by a court, any domestic relations perceived to have sexually abused or exploited in minor, or to. Okay.
How is, how is found to have sexually assaulted in my, different than found by a court to sexually assault? A sexual abuse different than sexual assault?
Um, no, I think it's more terminology, but.
The main difference between sexual assault and sexual abuse is that sexual assault occurs to adults and sexual abuse occurs to minors. This definition, since sexual assault, most often used in references to single experience and sexual abuse is over prolonged. Or sexual assault is often used to, um, describe single experience or references to single experience and use.
Sorry, I started. I don't know if this sounds right. I don't know if this sounds right. Now, do you think this is a very poor, mild, especially to a sexual abuse?
Would it be second, would it be, is that a, are you not?
Could be, um, it could also be like, uh, police officers. Uh, yeah. I mean, I, I also, I mean, as a social worker, I have a board that I can have disciplinary action through. I mean, anybody that's licensed for anything, you have a board that would.
So this could be a formal teacher.
Yes, yeah. So what I'm wondering is, um, if that could trigger this evidence, convictions, maybe it's more called law or just a board as identified in, following, as identified in the list below or other concerns regarding past behavior. Oh, we need that list, so, um.
The only thing that's not on that list as far as other concerns regarding past behavior that happened is when there's a conviction for selling or distributing drugs to minors.
Well, what about like, um, well. Well, like, what if someone's, uh, contributing to like minor possession? Um, that's all that. That would be distributed in circumstances? No, because alcohol is not illegal.
It is for minors.
Possession of it is, is against the law.
Possession of it.
Well, yeah, possession is consumption, but the substance of something isn't.
Right.
So that's why to me.
I want you to contribute it to the delinquency of minors.
There we go. That's very funny. And then some. Um.
And the or other concerns would that in indicate that this is not an all inclusive list?
I don't think so. So. The background check. Reveals evidence of convictions or, um, convictions. I think it's from a law. Or. Um, does that, or the app or cannot be recommended, period. The list below. Actually, still, uh, volunteers. Two. Okay. Two. Following. The cruel background check reveals a conviction pending charge, which is substantially related to the nature of the position in which the candidate to disclose that her clients. Application for volunteer assignment, maybe so he might keep it in there. Instead of they fail to disclose.
Right, we've already said we may only disclose or lie if it gets rejected, so.
Well, I think. The background check confirms the conviction or pending charge, which the candidate acknowledged on the application or determination showing the consultation with legal counsel, whether or not to reject the application based on consideration of the circumstances of the conviction pending charge and whether circumstances substantially relate to the nature of the particular position for which the candidate would come.
Can we, is there a language that we can put there so that it doesn't sound like every single time something comes up that they admitted to were going to call legal counsel? Because if they identify that they were found guilty of sexually abusing a minor, that's a, that's a, that's a nonstarter and doesn't require legal consultation. So can we refer back to that list? That we're not all that.
We're rocking out legal, please.
Yeah.
Okay, if the background check confirms a conviction pending charge, which the applicant acknowledged on the application board, its determination shall be made. Let's do this.
That happens, they call it.
Well, and you would then be able to say, it's on this list.
Yeah.
Um.
And if it's something weird that we can receive for, I'd say.
Yeah, shall be made by the superintendent, whether or not to reject the application based on the consideration of the circumstances of the conviction pending charge. And whether the circumstance substantially relates to the nature of the position or which the applicant. Okay, so we're telling people, just be honest. Selection of volunteers.
Oh.
Oh, no, we were just. You know. I'm sorry.
Right now. Is that a little late?
Selection and placement of volunteers. Placement of volunteers shall be their responsibility.
It's cool.
Who shall base placement decisions on data regarding staff needs.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, volunteers shall not make decisions regarding students or other personnel. Well, that's good. No volunteers shall be placed unless any identified, approved, or influenced. Okay.
Can we talk about that?
No.
Um, I struggle with language there a little bit because if, if a parent, if I was a principal and a parent came to me and wanted to volunteer in the children's room. And that this, the way this reads with the identified need of the teacher is only means that you're a volunteer. Or I know the teacher and the teacher said, I don't want to. I always say, you know, if parents want to. And the way that's worded, it, it just kind of makes it sound like we can say, sorry, we're, we don't have any needs and that we're not allowed to be volunteers.
No, I, I don't prefer the smart move at all. Um, but if this is the procedures for how to become a volunteer, should this, well.
You can apply, but if the staff has said, you don't want me.
Right.
And, and this sense of the super era of the principal is the same, sorry, I don't have any volunteers, they don't ship. Not that our super, our principals should do that.
But no, I, it does open itself, uh, it does.
Schmankens.
Yeah, and there could be a discrimination issue.
Especially if there's a, um, a principal or parent.
Like each other. There, thank you, perfect. Supervision. All volunteers shall provide assistance only under the direct supervision of a member of the professional administrative and or teaching staff. Volunteers who assist in the district only scheduled and on continuing basis shall be provided with written task description detailing responsibilities and expectations associated with qualifications. Maybe required. Volunteers who jeopardize the security, safety of a facility or office maybe deny access to school. Does she, volunteers who are in appropriately dressed maybe deny access to school. If a volunteer is injured while on school process or. Oh, teachers is. Stupid, you. He or she will report the situation to the principal, that's reasonable, possible. Okey dokey. Um. Let's see. So I don't like this paragraph, maybe.
I don't.
Um. Volunteers shall provide assistance only under the direct supervision of a member of a professional administrative.
Just that we don't understand.
Okay. Um, shouldn't it be just an employee of the district?
Yep.
Okay. Volunteers who assist in the district on a scheduled and on continuing basis shall be provided with written task descriptions detailing responsibilities. Do we have that?
No, that isn't.
Nor do we identify for them what specific qualifications they have, how they want to be able to do math or physics. Okay. Volunteers who jeopardize the security or safety of a facility or office maybe deny access to school. Okay. Um. You have to hear an appropriate interest. We're not.
Other girls away.
The boys don't want to see that.
Um, could we just say that, uh, volunteers, um, all the same school rules that was back then. And do we have to fill in all that stuff now?
I don't know. Um. The, and I don't understand why this is here, if this is about supervision, we're just saying they're going to be supervised.
Right.
Um.
That might go better in your relationship to a school volunteer if someone.
Well, the inappropriate interest is.
That definitely goes over here.
Um. And how would they jeopardize the security or safety of a facility or office?
Um, hopefully.
Okay.
If they pop exterior door open. This room. This is.
But maybe they would be denied. Because by moving the key even on. And are we denying the access or are we terminating the care?
We're terminating their volunteer.
Volunteer status? Or just the volunteer. Does that sound better? A volunteer is inappropriately dressed, uh, volunteers should be required to remedy their attire before providing access or being provided access to school. Well. Uh, before. Because it's their presence, not a child has nothing to do with blocking. Okay. Just volunteers are required to remedy their attire before providing access to school. If a volunteer is injured on school premises. Or. If a volunteer suffers. It was.
I really think, um, this is kind of bad behavior of the, of the volunteer. Um, I do think that we need to put in there somewhere that, um, using appropriate language. Actually, that's absolutely.
Okay.
Do we have that kind of awesome? When I'm on the volunteer services.
Press right. Nice. I think that's right. Volunteer. This is. This is appropriate. Or this. Terminating, is that what we do? Or?
Their, uh, their volunteer status would be revoked. And I like what's saying that. Wait, or you could say it just like that, yeah. Shall be terminated as a volunteer.
Is that fair? Oh, because I.
Yo, um, I used to have a lot of tech trips, trips, just watching. I, I've used that before because I've been frustrated with the margin and why they don't let me have it.
Right. Shown you stop with the blue man at the top, I'm gonna try that. Works. The relationship between schools and volunteers. When writing at school during their regular school hours, volunteers will meet with someone and issue a badge. School staff will be courteous to volunteers, show respect for their contributions. I can't believe they're still able to. Volunteers will be expected to extend courtesy and respect to school staff. Still, that's not easy. Any issues at the arise will be referred to volunteer coordinator. Should have done principal inappropriate. Y'all should be appropriate. All volunteers working in schools under the direct supervision of a member of the school.
Where you said that.
Yes. Um, so do we do periodic assessments?
Yeah.
Are you teaching? Was this in our? Thank you. Twenty sixteen. I cannot believe they have this. Sorry. Alright. Orientation training superintendent shall develop orientation chairs to be provided to all volunteers who have contacted students or you are in schedule or continue classes.
I, I will. Uh, the, it, right now it's the principals who provide the orientation chairs.
Why suppose we should have some more, uh, materials? This is what we're saying. These materials shall, but not the ones to, shall pertinent policies and safety and emergency procedures. Volunteers shall be provided appropriate training to develop a well consistent, their tasks as a resisting district's employees. This training shall be developed under the leadership of the principal. So you were developing orientation materials, they're developing the training. Okay.
Does it, the, in my mind, the orientation materials would be a lot of what's in here, just expectations. Uh, and then the principals are doing training regarding if you're going to do all the things.
Okay.
It's a specific task.
This training shall be developed under the leadership of the principal. Exceptions would be disappoint programs established by the administration or general. Volunteer programs would be defined. Do we have disappoint programs for volunteers? Each school should thoroughly orient volunteers to be due these. Volunteers also should be acquainted with the overall operation of the school.
Was this written by a veteran?
Ah, who knows, maybe, I think so. No, it is not. Volunteers should be acquainted with the overall operation of the school, including ones expected to involve employees and volunteers. They should be cautioned to discuss school matters outside of school. Their responsibility.
We do very, very confidentiality anxiety situation, that's when all our, those are some of those where one of our volunteers was also there and, um, a family team.
Uh, we talked to parents about how.
My, but they might not. So confidentiality, there would be, that would be part of my orientation work that I would put in there.
I don't want to say, but yeah. Training at local schools, local schools. Should not be held simultaneously with school sponsor functions. Trap my fire. Training apps.
Yeah, because they're saying volunteers should choose between going to a function or going to a training.
Volunteer is part of the. I think that's interesting. Uh, each volunteer coordinator, young half, will provide volunteers. All volunteers will be orientated, um, oriented. Volunteer guidelines, policies, and procedures. Okay. Expectations, expectations for creating positive school planning. Safety and security issues, confidentiality, all communication. Okay. Consideration just for sexual harassment and what on the patches. Okay, so if we're saying this, why are we saying all this? Volunteers who receive initial training from any, like the joint school district school or from district office. When volunteers train, though, where do you come from the local schools? The district volunteer coordinator, which we don't have, who conducts the training, must provide volunteers meeting to the locals. Volunteer coordinator, uh, will notify the volunteer specialized to training dates. Okay. Um, at the beginning of each school year, schools are encouraged to have multiple training sessions various times, the beginning of the day, beginning of October. The district's volunteer group will hold one training session. This is stupid. So, um. Should we have orientation chairs to be provided to all volunteers? Yes.
Should we should, well, and volunteers to call.
And then that list down below. Right. There you go. One more problem. Um, alright, so do we do that?
Um, I do think we need to put in here an expectation of how, that, like the minimum number. We've had some situations where we've had two, one to, to volunteer on any person, person's plan. And if we're only holding the orientation from nine o'clock in the morning. Some parents literally, they have to work to do the orientation, so they didn't say they have to work to. So I do think that there is an expectation that we're at least providing one evening orientation. Okay, it's just so we're help, we're trying to be. We just say at least one orientation, a minimum of one.
Because we don't have any numbers, there shouldn't be any numbers. That's fine.
She's got pixel. She's amazing.
Okay, orientations shall be scheduled once a liberty to come in. We volunteer in. Okay, seven thirty. So we probably stop here.
I walked into her office and she said.
So we'll end policy committee at seven thirty.